Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, I've asked my friend Stephen Butler, he's a co-pastor at Bible Baptist Church, to give our invocation. So bow your heads, please, and take it away, Stephen.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've given to us. Lord, I thank you for our city. I thank you for my hometown, Lord, the city of Monroe, and those who invest in it every day. I thank you for those leaders who seek the city's best. And so, Lord, tonight, we ask for your blessing here in this meeting. Lord, we ask for wisdom for those that would have to make decisions. We ask for guidance, Lord. We ask for your direction. And, Lord, I pray that there would be peace and there would be calm, there would be direction while we're here in this place. And, Lord, I pray that everything that we do would honor and glorify you. Lord, I pray that our character would be pleasing in your side. I pray that our words would be pleasing in your side. And, Lord, we'll thank you for that. We thank you for your help. Thank you for your guidance every day. And, Lord, we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
And as an FYI, while he's up here, I'll toot his horn a little bit. He is hosting a Christmas concert on December 10th. Has a Grammy-nominated group that will also be singing with him. Bible Baptist does an event every, what do we call it? Corral? Every year at Christmas. And they start working on this in kind of late June. So he cracks a mean whip over there, and this is just an outstanding concert. If you get a chance to go, it's December 10th. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming in. I'll now call this meeting to order of the October 10th, Monroe City Council Meeting. You met Stephen. Let the record reflect that all members are present, save Mr. Garrett. I think he's on the phone. Norman, are you there?
I am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please. Have a motion by Mr. Little. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda. This is council minutes and executive session minutes from September. Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Downtown Development Authority minutes for July 13th and July 24th. DDA minutes from August 10th. CVB and CVB minutes from the 13th and from August 10th. I need a motion for the approval of the consent.
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to public comment. Coach Kemp. You'll pass? Okay. I will say that Coach Kemp sent a nice letter this morning. I didn't reply knowing that I was going to see you here tonight, so just wanted to let you know. I don't have anybody else signed up for public comment? Is that correct? Moving forward to business items. City Administrator update, Mr. Probst.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I just want to let you guys know, economic development projects are still hot in Monroe, given the state of the economy with inflation and interest rates and all that. Really, just the retail, restaurant, industrial sectors, we're fielding requests daily, weekly, just like we were '21 and '22. So that's still good news for us here in Monroe. Building permits, however, have slowed a little bit, and that's not really, I think, because of the economic climate, just because we're kind of out of developments that are at a point ready to build. We have a couple more coming online in the next few months that will be building permit-ready, but that's probably one reason why your numbers have declined and your metrics that you have in some of your packets. And a quick note on the demolition on Wayne Street, the old Gwinnett Appliance Building. We've gotten that taken down. We still have to get rid of the concrete pad and a couple other things to make it safe. And eventually, we're going to extend some more downtown parking right there, but we're working out a plan with our engineers, and we hope to preserve as many trees in the interior as we can, kind of make a little parklet in the middle of the parking lot if we can do so, but also add some prime parking to our inventory. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan? Hearing none. Can we move to Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, sir. Couple of quick things. I had mentioned the airport is having their first-ever Fall Fest on October 22nd, so we have our larger downtown Fall Fest that's coming Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00. So everybody come out, join the 20,000, 25,000 people that'll be here. We'll have shuttles running. It'll be a good time. The most vendors, I believe, we've ever had sign up. But anyway, Fall Fest at the airport will be the following Sunday. I think we have about 400, 500 people signed up to attend that so far. We'll have the terminal building open from 11:00 to 2:00. Be the first time it's open to the public, as hopefully it will be furnished by then. We're working pretty hard. Here recently, too, I was going to point out that our Parks Department got some kudos on Facebook. We give out shirts, youth sizes, to any of the children, kids that visit Pilot, Matthews, the other various parks, and they actually tagged a couple of our guys on Facebook. So Deion, Chris Schmidt, James, they do an excellent job. L-Meg right now is going on on Walton Road. They've milled everything. They started paving, I believe, Lakeview, maybe finished that today. Obviously sidewalk project's done, so that entire area will be repaved, re-sidewalked on that main stretch. Our smaller rear loader garbage truck came in about a month ago. We currently have that on route, I believe, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then it's filling in on the other days as needed. That'll help us on some of these one-way streets downtown to keep from tearing up our asphalt, infrastructure, pavement. It's just easier to get around, and we can make quicker little revisits. I think it's some of the stuff that the drivers actually have to help get the cans to the curb and whatnot, they're hitting those routes as well, so we're helping people out. And then, other than that, you'll start to see lights going up shortly after Fall Fest and Children's Park for the Bike Strikes and Magical Lights Parade on November 16th, at which point then it leads us to December 7th will be our 70th Christmas parade this year. So I'll be glad to take any questions. Got them.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Are there any questions for Chris?
What is the theme for the Christmas parade?
Oh, I was afraid you was going to ask that. Isn't it 80s, 70s, or 80s, 70s? Yeah, it's one of those decades.
You're going to bring a disco ball.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I was barely alive in the 70s, so yeah, I didn't know that. But yeah, so 70s thing.
Hey, what are you going to wear? Your tie-dye?
Bell bottoms.
Tie-dye and bell bottoms. I know that this wasn't mentioned, but you two, City Administrator, Assistant City Administrator, probably had your hands full with more of the downtown green than you had planned. But I know we're getting really close, and I know it's kind of a moving target, but think back five and a half years ago when we bought that property, and it is amazing as how good that looks. So I appreciate both of your knocking that one out. Moving to MEAG Municipal Competitive Trust Funds. Logan, Probst.
Sure. So I've been here eight years, and we have never actually made a request to use any of the municipal competitive trust funds in electric. But as you remember, back in December, this past December, when we had our extreme cold snap, we, like many of our other utilities, were hit with extraordinary bills because of the power costs at the time were just absolutely extraordinary, and we didn't pass along the entire amount to our ratepayers. So people's bills did go up, but we certainly didn't pass along the entire amount of that bill. And so what we're asking for is a couple different things. To shore up our budget essentially of $826,864 that we were short, basically come January and February from that extreme cold weather event, and also for some extra capital expenses in the capex budget, CIP budget, of $1,130,539 to cover some really unique items that we did in '22 and '23, which was for the Publix Build Out, Spring Street Build, North and South Madison, those lines that were either brand-new to the system, or like in the cases of Madison and Spring, we're rebuilding, you know, 50-plus-year-old lines, and hopefully we won't have to do those again. But those two functions right there, the operating budget from the cold snap and the capital funds, were kind of unusual hits to the budget, and we're trying to stay on target and make sure that we have plenty of funds moving forward for other electric projects. So that's our request. In total, it's $1,957,403, and that would come from the MCT budget, which we definitely need to always keep a healthy budget in case anything bad were to happen, just like the cold snap was just, you know, really a couple days' worth. So imagine if another tornado or something like that comes through. So we're always very reluctant to ask to dig into this. Like I said, I've never done it, but that is the request before you to do that.
Any questions for Logan?
So the power cost per kilowatt hour? Higher?
Yeah, so if you remember, we and everyone else in the state of Georgia were buying off-system peak sales, because normally we have a budget and we know what our kilowatt-hour cost is going to be at any given point throughout the year, unless we hit a major hot or cold event. And because of that cold event, we were faced with extraordinary per-kilowatt-hour costs around Christmas time. So we didn't want to absolutely pass along 100% of that to our customers, so we did have some power cost adjustment, but not to the full effect of what those bills ended up being for MEAG for the cost of all that power. So what I'm trying to do, now that we're way on into the year, I kind of wanted to see how we're trending, and we're kind of, we're basically $826,000 short of where we ought to be for that budget, based on that January billing.
Well, the money for the additional CIP funds, that, as a lot of that, what we agreed to do in order to attract public...
Yeah, if you remember 2018, I guess, when we started on that agreement, we said we would build that line, and that was really part of it. That was the bulk of the cost.
Why it's not covered by CIP.
Yeah, that's the general reason why it wasn't fully covered by CIP.
Any other questions? Tyler? Norman, you good?
I'm trying to understand what is he, I'm really trying to understand what he's saying.
Okay.
I heard him say 22 and 23. Then I heard him say something about we 800-something thousand short.
Right.
But I don't understand how we short 800-something thousand.
That was from the power cost that went way above and beyond our budget for December of '22, for which we were building in January. So what we were trying to do is kind of shore up our budget on the electric side so that we weren't in such a deficit, so to speak, because of those huge off-system sales. For instance, you know, a couple years ago when Texas got hit, there was a city there that had to bond out like $30 million to make that payment, you know? So at least...
Yeah, but their grid, all their grid failed, and they had real problems, but we didn't occur no real problems from what you're talking about, Texas occurred.
Well, you're right, but we had to buy our system.
Let me ask you a question. What is the plan with the money you trying to get? Because I don't understand, if nothing is, need to be paid for or whatnot, why are you trying to get money from some other source unless it's really necessary?
I'm simply just trying to rebalance that budget for the year so that we have plenty of other funds to continue our capital expenditure program and general maintenance and operations program.
Okay. Well, do you know how much is in that budget now?
I don't have it in front of me at the moment.
Are you talking about the MCT budget?
Is that what you're talking about, MCT? The one I'm trying to draw?
I'm trying to figure out how much funding is in the budget that you're trying to put that additional 800-something thousand in. How much money is in the actual budget?
You have to give me a minute to look that one up.
Just a second, Norman.
So, yeah, so back to the MCT. We have over $21 million invested in the MCT, and we have it in various portfolios, short, medium, and long-term, which have different interest rates tied to it. So that money has been growing at a pretty good clip. We invest approximately $100,000 into it each month, and that's a straight pass-through from MEAG, so it still has a healthy fund balance. So if we were to do these reimbursement requests, we'd still have $19,240,000 in it.
So if you don't do the reimbursement request, what difference would that really make? If we got $21 million in the account anyway? So you always, you will always have something to fall back on, even if you didn't do the request?
Well, no, my point is, that's the fund that we would be taking it from, so to speak, and then putting it in the combined utility fund.
Logan, am I correct that if we do not make this transfer, we'll be over budget by this year?
We could be.
Utility costs, and this will put us back in balance?
Correct. We could be, because we weren't trending well, really just because of those items, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure I understand why there's any controversy about this. You know, we had an unforeseen situation arise. We covered it for things like that.
Logan, my question is, the money that you trying to move...
Mr. Garrett, one second, please. One second, please.
So we got $21 million sitting there to be used for this kind of thing. I don't see what the controversy is.
Okay, okay. Not yet, not yet. Give me the discussion part. All right, Mr. Garrett?
I didn't understand what David was saying, whatever he was saying.
Okay. David's saying that money is there specifically for this reason, that if we do have a significant weather event and we do go over budget, that we can recover it from the Municipal Competitive Trust. So back to you.
And ain't that what I just said? If the money, if you always can fall back on the money, what's the reason for moving it?
To balance the budget.
To keep our budget balanced moving forward, it's kind of a precursor to a budget amendment, but it's actual cash movement.
And all things being equal, we'll have 1.2 million that is going back into there over the next 12 months to reimburse that MCT. So it's for emergencies and down the roads and economic development projects.
Are you getting ready to do something with that funding when you move that money? Or you just moving it just because you can?
It's just to bring the budget back into balance.
Right, but it's also to shore up our OpEx account, which is not trending the way it should, mainly because of January, and also for our capex account, for which we're putting money back into the system right now as we speak. Rodney's got a sleeve of projects he's still working on, and it takes a little bit of the pressure off of our CIP as well. As things are becoming more expensive, it gives us the opportunity to continue on those CIP items.
And we'd like to have a reserve in CIP for anything unexpected, and this dips into that percentage in that reserve, right?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Mr. Garrett, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dickinson.
I'm making a motion now. I move to approve.
That would be great.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. A motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson, a second to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the bid, the award for the natural gas bypass relocation. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. This is a request to approve Southern Pipeline for the low bid of $149,949 for the relocation of our natural gas main for the bypass project. It's approximately 9,800 feet of gas main that they'll be relocating for us. If you'll remember, we had to buy the material, I believe, back, what, around October of '21 on an emergency, then everything got pushed back, and we originally did this bid in May of '22, and because the bypass was delayed, we had to then rebid it again. So this is the request for the approval of that.
Perfect. Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey?
Southern Pipeline, a well-vetted company.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the purchase of material handling truck. Mr. Millerbrooks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Asking for your approval tonight to purchase the IOTech material handling truck. This was a truck that Brian originally had in the CIP for this year. When he went to order at the beginning of the year, they told him it was a estimated late '20, '24, early '20, '25 delivery date. So he changed directions and went to a, purchased a service truck that he initially intended to have in the '24 budget. So we received a phone call from IOTech, and they had someone back out on one of the trucks, and they're offering it to us for $227,900, which is $112,000 savings over the one that we had budgeted earlier this year. You got any questions?
That sounds like a deal.
It is.
Are there any questions for Rodney? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Little. In a second, was that Tyler? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Public hearing, 635 James Huff Road. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for 635 James Huff Road from R1A to PRD. They're proposing 129 single-family detached lots. I did provide the history of the project in the staff report, but I'm going to provide counsel with a little bit of background on this site. So this project was actually zoned and annexed into the city back in June of 2006. At that time, it was zoned to R1A, was proposed for 129 single-family residential lots. In August of 2006, the preliminary plat for the project was approved by the city, and then in September of 2006, they submitted their site development plans for review, and through the course of about a year's time, there was no LDP issued, primarily because the 2007, 2008 financial crashes, you know, hit the city and hit the nation. So there was no activity on this project for years. It was zoned R1A, sat there stagnant until 2021, when the current owners purchased the property, and in doing so, in their pursuit, they were attempting to submit a preliminary plat in December 2021, discovered there was an issue related to a sewer easement, and so they went and pursued to obtain that. It was at the same time that this council enacted a moratorium for a preliminary plat specifically for single-family residential subdivisions outside the city core. So in February of 2023, after the moratorium was wrapping up and the amendments were placed into the zoning ordinance specifically related to all new developments in the city being zoned to a planned development, being one of them. And so since that time, the owner has complied with that request by submitting a rezon to PRD. We received that in July, was pushed to the August Planning Commission meeting, and at that meeting, it was tabled for a month to address two citizen concerns regarding cemeteries and potential wetlands located on the property. Both were discovered to not be the case, and at the last month's meeting of Planning Commission, they recommended approval subject to conditions. So this is the project itself. It is basically the same footprint of development that was proposed in 2006. It's the same number of lots, it's 129. They're proposing two entrances, one off James Huff Road and one off Old Athens Highway, and they are, that is to comply with our current requirement for two entrances for developments under 200 lots. It's basically the same configuration that was proposed in 2006. They have submitted a pattern book that includes minimum standards as required by your ordinance that is included with the rezon itself. They have all the minimum standards proposed. They do not have any architectural samples. They are proposing to default to the council's zoning ordinance requirements for single-family homes in the city, which is our base standard for single-family dwellings. The planning commission has made their recommendation. It was a vote four to one. Approval subject to the two conditions that are outlined at the end of staff's report, and I'll be happy to read those if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
The first condition, the minimum lot size and development shall be 10,000 square feet. Number two, the landscape buffer planning scheme shall be subject to the approval of the Planning and Zoning Director at the time of preliminary plat approval. Landscape buffer shall include at a minimum, A, an earthen berm to less than six feet in height, and a maximum slope of 50%. Tree plantings with a density of one tree planted every 40 feet of linear distance within the landscape buffer. Trees shall be a minimum of two-inch caliper and six-foot high in height at the time of planting. And evergreen plant material in the form of large and small shrubs stagger throughout the landscape buffer. This will be subject to the Planning and Zoning Director's discretion at the time to make sure that we're getting an adequate buffer. Site conditions are going to dictate, and some of the topography in front of the site's going to dictate what that scheme looks like, so we're trying to provide some mild flexibility there, so when they propose that design, they should be able to meet the intent of this condition. But that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Are there any questions for Brad? Hearing none. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this rezon? Mr. Coleman?
And Mayor and Counsel, thank you for your time tonight. My name's Billy Coleman. I know several of you, and I'm here representing the ownership tonight. We just would like to ask for your approval based on the current zoning and the city recommendation. Brad done a great job of bringing you through the life of the project and then also on the zoning commission's recommended approval. So I'll reserve the rest of my time for any rebuttal.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak against the rezon, please? Ms. Baldwin?
I'm David Milton. I own the property south of the building lots. We've got 17 lots lined up along my property line. I'm not showing a buffer or anything. It's, I'm zoned agricultural. I've farmed it for 30 years, and I need, I would like to see a buffer of some sort between me and the backyards of those houses. My Janus in my house, our barn, is on a well. It's a bored well. Got concerns about that, and just, I guess that's, yeah. I mean, the pond, there's a pond on the property, on that property, and I've heard people say that it was dry or whatever, but it's always had water in it from the time that my neighbors and all had fed their cows out of it and watered their cows. So I'm thinking, and the county requires a 50-foot buffer between residential and agricultural property. So I would like y'all to take that into account when making, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Milton.
We're neighbors. I live in that little strip between, his property surrounds mine.
We're neighbors. I live in that little strip between. His property surrounds mine. Anyway, what he's talking about, that fence, we would prefer not just a buffer of landscape, but also a fence. I mean, at any given time, he's had horses there. We've talked about getting cows, but basically, everybody's backyard is going to think that our two properties is their playground. And the pond has still really never been addressed, that the, on the plat says that there's floodplain, and that it's an existing pond, and that they're just going to level it. And we are slightly lower than that, and there is a creek that comes in there, and the chances are is that when they do demolish that, the water has got to go somewhere. It has water twenty-four seven. I lived in my property for twenty-six years. It has water three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So whatever they supplied saying that it's a dry pond is absolutely not accurate. So...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Calendar? Mr. Calendar, the pond, the pond that we're talking, that they were mentioning? Did we, we studied that, right?
In two thousand and six, when they were pursuing the site development plans, there was a report, environmental report, that was submitted that says that that was for stormwater collection only. It was not a spring-fed pond. And they were, they had a core permit to mitigate the pond at that time, which would require that any flows moving through that area, they're not going to be able to just send that stormwater offsite. They're going to have to collect and capture and then treat that stormwater on their own property, because they're going to be grading that part of the site anyway. The likelihood of it staying the same is probably not going to be the case.
But, but, but the water flow will be addressed?
It will have to be, to meet our minimum stormwater management standards.
Right. Okay. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Calendar, what is our required setback between residential and agricultural?
We have no such setback, because there are no agricultural uses in the city.
So in this case, what will that setback be between?
It will be, based on what the plan has shown, the property owner that spoke, the adjoining land that's next to that, there are no showing no buffer. So it would be, well, to your point, it would be the rear setback, in this case, twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet.
If I'm not mistaken, they go back to their minimum standards.
Brad, let me cut you off one second. We'll come, come right back to that. On the public hearing side, I went too far. I should not have asked about the flow until we have a council discussion. That comes up in just a minute. We'll be right back. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? Hey, Coach.
Mayor, City Council, good evening, everyone.
Thank you for coming in.
Just like they're saying, I'm a longtime resident of James Huff Road. I live at nine forty-six James Huff Road. Did I state my name? Timothy Kemp.
Yes, sir.
You call me Coach Kemp?
I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter. I go by all of it, okay? I, I, I do have concerns. James Huff Road has become, let's back up, used to be Pipeline Road. I sent all of you an email with a little bit of history, and there's a lot more to it than that. I've seen this road go from a two-lane highway, which is still a two-lane road, that is a main artery. Traffic on this road is horrible. I know. I've almost been hit four times in the last year, because I live on that curve, and I'll look to the left, look to the right. When I look back to the left, nothing's coming. When I look up, somebody's in my rear. That's one of the concerns. My child was almost hit getting on the bus one morning. That's been a few years ago. I've been looking for a traffic study, and all of a sudden, no one has a traffic study. But I know that there was a traffic study out there within the past five years, because it was sitting at, on the sign. The concern with the water, there's a stream, Jack's Creek, that comes across, Grattis Road, that feeds into a pond across from me, which is owned by McGahey, which continues down across Old Athens Highway on the property that she just talked about. Brad Huff, who used to live in the house where she lived, Marvin Huff and Judy Huff used to live in that house. Brad also talked about going back there, playing in that pond. That pond goes across seventy-eight that ties into Jack's Creek. So there's water there. Concern is the density. Why so many houses in a small area? One hundred and twenty-nine houses on forty-nine acres? I'm not against building. The east side of Walton County has been slow to grow. This I know. But why one hundred and twenty-nine homes? Multiply one hundred and twenty-nine homes times two. Then when you add kids in later on, do the addition there. That's a lot of traffic. I sit in the mornings and listen to the cars that travel. I listen in the evening at the cars that travel. This highway has become a dangerous highway. You have trucks coming from Eunisia, you have trucks coming from Walmart Distribution that should not be on the highway. So if city owns part of its property, why are they not out there patrolling? They patrol seventy-eight because they see me all the time, and I'm hoping that I'm not speeding when I come through. If you remember Walton, Walton Inn, that used to be the drive-in theater. It's no longer the drive-in theater. There's a truck wash on the backside. Mr. Huff, also, there was a farm next door, cattle farm next door to it, to the drive-in theater. Mr. Huff owned the two houses, which was a white brick house with a swimming pool, swimming pool in the front yard. It's grown up around there. Where Ms. Baldwin lives, again, Judy Huff, Marvin Huff lived on that property, Brad Huff, who was a former athlete of mine, such as a few people up here on this board. Excuse me. All we're asking, the density, why so many homes on forty-nine acres? The character of this neighborhood, the minimum acre is one acre plus one. And if you look at Old Athens Highway, you're asking to put more, more traffic on that highway also. There's no shoulder on that highway. From James Huff all the way over to Mountain Creek Church Road, there's no shoulder. So let's look at the character. I get it. Because if you back up and look at the history of how this was annexed into the, to the city, let's look at that strip of land that comes from Cherry Hill all the way up to James Huff. Because I went to Planning and Zoning to ask, how can they do this? Because it touches part of the city. That strip might be as wide as this room that runs all the way to James Huff. That's how it was annexed in. That was some backdoor stuff that was done in two thousand and six. I will say it and I mean it. They tried to annex that area into the city back in the nineties. We met at Max Lassiter's house to oppose it then, and as of today, tonight, we still oppose it. Now, if he want to build homes, one acre tracks are fine. No problem. But the density with one hundred and twenty-nine homes, let's use some common sense. Please. Yes, I know that the bypass is coming. It's been coming for years. Years. I've been hearing this. The bypass is coming. Social Circle got it right. We got to get it right here in Monroe. So please, let's do the right thing. That's all we're asking. It's not about a quick dollar. Let's look at lives. Let's look at the people that live there. We love the character of our neighborhood. It's quiet, used to be, but not anymore. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in, Coach. Is there anyone else who, yes, sir?
My name's Fariki Emmerich. I live seven fifteen Huff Road in James Sims, I bought my property from. And I live at the corner of James Huff and Old Athens Highway, and I got five hundred foot of road frontage on both, for both roads. And ever since I lived there, in the last two years, say, at one, two o'clock at night, I had to call the law out there. The transfer trucks pull up in Old Athens Highway to the left at night, like back, back across James Huff into Old Athens Highway. I'd call the Sheriff's Department. It got road blocked. And when they pull up in there, they don't even get out of their trucks. Whoever's coming down James Huff is going to hit a car one, you know, hit one of their trucks one day. And it's getting worse and worse. And like on my property, on my backyard, I'd like to some kind of privacy fence put up and be so far away from my fence. And it's sad, I'm with this guy. There's nothing to be building but not close together, because I'm on a well, and my neighbor's on a well. But I just hope y'all take that in consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Emmerich.
And does, like with that subdivision, do they have to build sidewalks and safety stuff coming out of that road, subdivision?
Leave to the property line, correct?
It will be required to build them along.
Because a lot of your places now, if they build, and they go ahead and make them do the sidewalks, turn lanes, have they even looked at that?
They'll build to the property line.
Safety of it?
It would be to the property line.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming in. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this rezon? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll be back to revisit that in just a few minutes. Moving to the conditional use for eight-thirty-nine overlooked trail, Mr. Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a conditional use request to the City Council for a childcare home. You see on the slide behind you is the photograph of the location, eight-thirty-nine overlooked trail. Currently zoned R-1. They are proposing to have a childcare home there. It will take care of up to six children at a time. They have their hours of operation posted in the report, which was from five AM to seven PM, Monday through Fridays, and they propose to take care of children up to twelve years of age. The parking on the site would be limited to what's there now. Basically, it's a two-car driveway, and they would be able to accommodate a couple of drop-offs at one time in front of the house. The street was adequate enough for that limited amount of traffic. And the recommendation from staff and the Planning Commission was approval subject to two conditions. Those conditions being, number one, the childcare home should operate as described in the applicant's narrative, and shall not provide care to more than six children at any time. And number two, if the property is transferred to a new owner, if the property is sold, this conditional use approval shall become null and void and shall not transfer to the new owner.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this conditional use? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this conditional use? Hearing none, kind of figured this was going to be a slam dunk. I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll be back to revisit in just a few moments. Moving to Development Regulations, text amendment number seven, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proposed before you is the seventh update to the Development Regulations. We are proposing to amend, you're seeing this again, we, it started the amendment process for this section to clarify the length of time LDPs were allowed, and then when they would expire. We're proposing to make some changes to that section, so this continues to be the seventh update. So in this amendment, as you recall, there was some vagary about when LDPs expire, and the way it was written, it said they expired within twelve months. We are, and the extension was, that was allowed was unclear. It was not to exceed three months, and then how long they actually had lasted was very unclear. So we're proposing to extend the LDP time to twenty-four months after its issuance. Currently, right now, it's twelve. We're going to also allow for one three, one six-month extension. If you recall our first proposal, there was no extension at all. So we're going to add a six-month extension in there for some grace in case unforeseen circumstances occur on the development. And then we're clarifying the automatic expiration language. We're going to add a total of six months for no development activity at all from the date of issuance. And then if there's any lapse of development activity on the site, we're going to increase that from the current standard of thirty days to ninety days. Trying to be as flexible as possible here with all circumstances going on in the world and all the constraints and issues when it comes to site development and transformers and all those good things. So what you're seeing now with this proposal is a timeline that from the time of an L, from a preliminary plat, they have up to a year to obtain an LDP, or the preliminary plat expires. So if you factor in that timeframe, plus the time of the LDP, if they do obtain one, you're really looking at the bottom-line total for a developer to have a total of forty-two months or three and a half years to obtain a final plat from this council from the date of a preliminary plat. That's the proposed change to that section, and I'm going to quickly back up, and you can see those changes there listed in blue there in that section. So it should clarify and provide some flexibility for our development community moving forward. So part of the Development Regulation Amendments also includes the procedural change and some clarification on some preliminary plat procedure. We are proposing to clarify the number of copies that need to be submitted, the types of individuals that can submit a plat. We're adding the word surveyor in there. Currently, it just says engineer now and landscape architect. Certainly, a surveyor could prepare a plat, so we're adding that as an allowed individual. The biggest change, though, here is changing the, well, we're also clarifying the procedures. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, but on the screen are the alignments of the procedures you amended back in February of this year. We're adding that into this section for clarity, so both sections now align. But we are changing the approval authority from the City Council to the Planning Commission only. Instead of there being a two-meeting requirement for a Planning Commission, for a preliminary plat approval, we're going to ask that the Planning Commission be the final authority on the preliminary plat, that being the preliminary plat only. Currently, right now, as a, as an example, the City Council only sees the final plat. The Planning Commission does not review the final plat in any, in any capacity at all. So the procedure would be, Planning Commission reviews preliminary plats, and the City Council reviews final plats. We will continue to inform the City Council when preliminary plats are submitted, and they'll be included in your executive report each month, so they should be, they'll be awareness that they're actually being submitted to the staff, and plus, they'll be provided in your minutes each month. So that, that's what represents that procedural change there. I'm not going to read each and every word, but it basically is a change from the City Council to the Planning Commission. And that includes updating the last section that makes the Planning Commission the approval authority and updating the stamp, and then the removal of the council stamp. And that's all the Development Regulation Amendments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Brad. Are there any questions for Mr. Calendar?
I have a question. When that preliminary plat is approved by Planning and Zoning, the developer then goes, and he spends a lot of money on that final plat before it comes to us. Is that not going to make it even more difficult for us once we see that final plat? If we want to make changes, it's going to be costly to that developer?
I'm not sure I follow, because a preliminary plat is meeting your technical requirements of whatever zoning district or it is, or planning district that it is. It's a technical review. There shouldn't be any changes, so I'm not sure I understand your question.
It's more like, it's not in the zoning realm. It's more in the, the, the technical realm of, are they putting in their curbing right?
Right. And are they building these berms? And are they doing these plantings?
That has to be checked off on through your zoning actions. So if somebody comes in and you require whatever buffering, we have to make sure then that that's incorporated in the technical review of that preliminary plat. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission would be that governing body to say yea or nay. There's still a chance, if they turn it down, the Planning and Zoning Commission turns it down, it can still make its way up to the City Council for review.
And if I may supplement what he's saying, I think to give you some assurance, so when a final plat is submitted to this council, the items that are not built on the site are either being bonded, because there's no other alternative. But technically, they should all be installed. They're either going to be installed, or they're going to be bonded to be installed. Am I...
And let me just add to that. The other reason why this change is being proffered for y'all is, we're one of the very few councils that even had preliminary plats still, and most cities have moved preliminary plat approval all the way back to the administrative level. So right now, preliminary plat, which is very technical in nature and very almost perfunctory in process, is coming all the way up to you guys, legislative body, when there's not a lot of decision, legislative decision-making to be had. And so we're moving it one step back, but not taking it all the way to administrative. So Planning Commission will review preliminary plats. Y'all still have to approve final plats, because that's when y'all accept and dedicate the roadways essentially. And you don't have to approve the final plat if everything's not in place, right? If everything's not in place, you don't have to approve the final plat. You can say, I'm not approving the final plat. Or you can say, I'm approving the final plat subject to, you know, bonding or development agreement or those sort of things to finish things out. But we're, we've been doing preliminary plats for a long time at this legislative level when most jurisdictions no longer are.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say...
Yeah, I got a quick question. So when you saying that, are you saying that they will no longer come before City Council?
That's correct.
So you saying Planning and Zoning would be, have, have a final say?
On a preliminary plat, that's correct.
On preliminary only.
So at what point would they come before City Council?
For final plat.
Zoning, and then final plat. And remember, all of your code of ordinances here that you have before you, like for this number seven update, is only, it's part of the entire body in your book of code of ordinances. So, you all have already legislative, legislatively added, like, this huge bible that we have to go by for ensuring that it meets what you want, right? So, staff is then charged with implementing all of your wishes about how development works. Then we work with the developers over a period of time to implement that. Then we review it. And actually, what we're trying to do is we've listened to a lot of the builders and developers, and we're trying to streamline things a little bit, be a little bit more business-friendly here, and not drag them through, you know, a couple of extra months of unnecessary pain.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Brad?
I just had one comment. And one thing that we can do is look at our design standards. If we want to change something, if we want to sit down one day, you know, as we're going through different processes, that's something that we could look at and see if, if the way that we would like neighborhoods to be built are being built suited to what we're looking for in Monroe. So, we can, we can edit it that way, right? That's our, that's our tool.
Correct.
Right, and we'll, and we'll come back for that part for discussion when we vote on. This is just, this is the public hearing portion.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's the tool we have in our-
Right, and we just need to make sure that, that our standards are, well, that we want them to be before.
Again, this is something that we need to discuss during, after, after the public input. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this text amendment change? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this text amendment change or alteration? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll be back to revisit that in just a moment. We do have new business tonight. Mr. Bradley, would you like to?
I would. Just to share a few words with the council members. Almost 16 years ago, I guess, Carol and I moved back to Monroe, moved back home, and we were glad to be here. At that time, I joined a men's sun school class at First Baptist. And one of the members of that class was a gentleman by the name of Bob Malcolm. And Bob and I became friends. I grew a lot of, had a lot of respect for him. I gained a lot of respect for his character, for his integrity, and as much as anything, for his sense of humor. Bob has a way of digging into you sometimes and attacking you a little bit, you know, and good-naturely, with his sense of humor. But he never does it more to you than he does to himself. So, Bob's really good with his sense of humor, character, integrity. He grew up in Walton County on a farm out of Good Hope. You know, went to University of Georgia, majored in agriculture, got started in agriculture. And like many of us who grew up on a farm, decided that maybe farm life and agriculture is not where he needs to be. So, he bought a house down here on the corner of Highland Avenue and Day Street. He and his wife Barbara have been living there for between 45 and 50 years now, and been quite a citizen of Monroe. He got into real estate with a broker, had a brokerage office at Malcolm Realty Company, which is located in downtown Monroe, in a building that's now owned by another Malcolm family, where Malcolm and Malcolm Realty is. It was Malcolm Realty, now it's Malcolm and Malcolm. Did appraisals for a long time. He's just been a vital part of the community. He was a vital part of the church, has been for many years in leadership roles. He has been leadership roles within the city, a vital part of the city of Monroe, and just somebody that I think we need to honor sometimes, these citizens that have meant so much to us and what we've done. Bob couldn't be with us tonight. He's having some health issues. And we're glad to have his son, Mike, and daughter-in-law, Meredith, with us tonight. But I'm going to, I'm happy to present to you tonight a resolution to change the name of Day Street to Malcolm Day Street in honor of Bob and Barbara, and their almost 50 years living right there on the corner of that street. Didn't want to take away the name Day, because Mr. Day was an interesting person many, many years ago. Mr. Day owned the first automobile in Monroe, as I understand it. And so, I'm hoping we can change the name. It's my pleasure to present that resolution to you. I'd ask the mayor if he would read the resolution, and then I'd be happy to make a motion for approval.
Great, I appreciate that, Mr. Bradley. Mr. Rosenthal, would you please do the honor?
Be happy to. This is a resolution of the City Council of City of Monroe, Georgia, to rename the street name of Day Street to Malcolm Day Street. Whereas Georgia statutes provide the municipality shall have the governmental, corporate, and proprietary powers to enable them to conduct municipal government, perform municipal functions, and exercise any power for municipal purposes, except where expressly prohibited by law. And whereas Article 1 of the Charter of City of Monroe, Georgia empowers the city to adopt, amend, or appeal such ordinances and resolutions as may be required for the power of governing of the city. And whereas Day Street is within the jurisdictional limits of the city. And whereas the city has received a request to change the name of Day Street to Malcolm Day Street to honor the life and legacy of its longtime resident, Robert Ellis Malcolm, while continuing to honor the Day family for their contributions to the history of our city. And whereas Robert Ellis Malcolm and his family have lived at 302 West Highland Avenue next to Day Street for a period of 45 years. And whereas Robert Ellis Malcolm has served his church in this community with distinction for his entire life. And whereas Robert Ellis Malcolm has served as a good friend and colleague to many Monroe and Walton County citizens, and his sense of humor, kindness, energy, and graciousness has enriched those fortunate enough to know him. Now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and City Council of Monroe, Georgia, as follows. One, that the above recitals are true and correct, and hereby incorporated by references that are fully set forth herein and are adopted as legislative and administrative findings of the city. Two, that the city recognizes Robert Ellis Malcolm's love of and dedication to the city, and expresses its appreciation for his contributions to its citizens. And three, that the request to change the street name of Day Street is approved and shall henceforth be known as Malcolm Day Street in honor of these families who have contributed much to the welfare of this community. That this resolution will become effective upon its adoption this, I'm sorry, this 10th day of October, 2023. That is the resolution, Mayor.
May I like to move approval of the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. I have a motion on the floor, and I already have a second by Ms. Malcolm to my right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, everybody. Mike, tell your folks we said hello. Tell Debbie we wish you could be with us, and we appreciate your coming. Moving to the application for spirituous liquors and beer and wine on-premise consumption at the factory at Walton Mill. Gable, are you here? Gable? This is, this- It's not like you don't look exactly alike, sorry. Anything you'd like to say? Very thanks. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Bradley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the application of the wine shop at the loft. Mr. Rosenthal, is this in order?
Yes, Mayor, both of these applications are-
And I did see Adrian, who's here. Would you like to speak? I'm guessing it's a slam dunk. Keep your seat. Well, we want to come by some. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Just so you know, once this all gets going, she'll be at 113 North Broad Street, so she'll be able to serve all your wine needs. And as long as you don't have that wax pumpkin stuff, you know? All right, we're good. Rezone 635 James Huff Road. I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion and action by the council on the rezone of the property at 635 James Huff Road from R1A to PRD.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I always have a question. In regards to the buffer, where is that buffer going to be located?
We don't, we don't require a buffer adjacent to residential uses, but to answer your question from earlier, it's a 25-foot rear setback.
Okay. But the buffer we're referencing in one of the conditional conditions?
That, we're, those are specifically along the roadways to separate the-
We need that.
Right.
Everyone sees what we've got in some other developments. But I would like to see some type of buffer on that back 1,700-plus feet abutting to Mr.?
Milton?
No.
Baldwin, Emmert.
Milton, yes, to Mr. Milton. Was there discussion about that?
At the Planning Commission level?
Yes.
This is the fir, this is the first instance that has been brought up. I believe that was a fence by Ms. Baldwin, and then Mr. Milton had described having some distance, like a buffer. So, that's, that was two specific comments that I heard tonight that I had not heard before at the Planning Commission meeting about those properties. So, and just, I mean, if, depending on what you're thinking-
I mean, this is open space.
Absolutely.
It's a farm behind.
Absolutely.
And I do see where they're coming from in the sense of, this is going to be certainly filled with families and children, and it's going to be very inviting for those children, the way it sits today, to, to just, you know, enjoy a ball field or, or whatever.
So, not a four-wheel- Mayor, may I? I mean, I agree with Ms. Malcolm about the buffer issue, and I want to ask Mr. Coleman something about that in a minute. But I was talking to Mr. Kemp outside before we came in. And we're talking about the history of this property and how it came to be annexed into the city. And I know several of the people that live out there near it. I think one of the things that's critical tonight is that we clarify what this is and what it isn't. Because some folks have expressed concern that they're worried about their wells being contaminated. This project has been brought to the city because it's going to have city sewer. We're not talking septic tanks out there. We're not talking potential contamination for people's wells. The fundamental question of whether this should have ever been annexed into the city. I wasn't on the council in 2006. If I had been, I never would have supported annexing this property, because it's one of those, as Mr. Kemp said, you've got this little narrow strip that goes down to it that allowed it to be done. Probably shouldn't have been done, but it's out there. It was already approved under the previous standards for R1A for this number of lots. And I think there's a misconception about what's going on with this rezoning. We're not changing anything. We're not increasing the density. It's already been approved all of those years ago for the exact same number of houses. And that density is allowed in the city for one reason primarily. We have the sewer capacity. The county does not have it. The county will never have it. So, it's not like there's going to be another subdivision with this number of houses located next to it. Nobody else has that. The traffic problem, again, illustrates why it never should have been annexed the way it was. We don't control the traffic out there. The road is a county road. So, the county is charged with patrolling it, enforcing the laws on it. We have no mechanism by which we can do that whatsoever. So, we're going to have this subdivision that's part of our city, but we don't control any of the adjacent roads. We just control the streets that are inside the subdivision, which is why inside the subdivision, there will be those nice four-foot-wide sidewalks. There will be all of the plantings and all of that that we require. But we can't force the developer to put sidewalks out on the public roads. If it was in the city and we owned the streets, we would, we do. But that's county, and we have no control over it. So, the other thing I was concerned about is this thing about there was a potential unmarked cemetery out there, unmarked graves in it. And according to the report, it has now been confirmed that none of those graves are on this tract. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, my next question is, what about access to that cemetery? You cannot, as a government body, cut off access to a cemetery. And I asked Mr. Kemp about that. I said, "Well, how is that cemetery accessed?" I'm a little unclear. I mean, is it accessed over this property that's proposed for development? Or does it have some defined independent access? Because you cannot cut off access to the cemetery. And I would think Mr. Coleman would want to be very careful about that issue, because you don't want to build a house over a lot that offers access to the cemetery, if that's the case. And I don't even know where the cemetery is. We don't have it shown.
Briefly, I can tell you that cemetery is not located on this property at all.
Right, but where is it?
It's on the property north. It's directly off Old Athens Highway. It's, it's across the creek.
Does it have access?
It's got its own, pretty simple French, to Athens Highway. And it's, the family that owns the property is some of the descendants of the cemetery.
Okay, all right. That answers my question.
Okay. Anything else? Tyler?
Mayor, if I can just add just a little bit, not to beat the dead horse from what Mr. Dickinson said, but, you know, the decision for 129 lots, the decision for the density, all that was made in 2006, 17 years ago. The changes that your planning director, Mr. Brad, had been putting in over the last couple of years have added the metrics and the requirements of how we build neighborhoods. And that added layer of zoning mandates is what forced the developer to come back here and come to the table with a plan, pattern book. So, the short answer is this rezone is getting you guys and the citizenry more out of this neighborhood than what the developer had as a matter of right.
We've done that, right. We've done that before.
Eighteen months ago. And so, at the end of the day, the 129 lots, the layout, that's been sitting on the books essentially since 2006. A decision was made long before 17 years ago.
There are only two things that I want to mention. I agree with Ms. Baldwin, Mr. Milton. The berm or the buffer between those back lots and the, and the neighbors is, is very important. However you can divide that is number one. Number two, when it comes to a creek or a stream-fed pond that is actually considered, I believe in the study, was considered stormwater. Either way, either way, there's the, there's the environmental entity that has nothing to do with zoning. So, this is specifically zoning of the property, rezoning of the property, which is much tighter than the 129 lots that were approved in '06. So, they're going to have to keep an eye on that, on that stream. Now, are there any other questions? Is there a comment? Is there something? No, sir, I'm sorry.
Could we ask the developer to comment on the buffer?
Absolutely. Mr. Coleman?
Regarding that buffer on those, those back lots that abut?
Yeah, it sounds like the easiest fix would just be for me to commit to running a fence[1699.17] Yeah, it sounds like the easiest fix would just be for me to commit to running a fence from the front of the subdivision to the back property line, all the way along that property line, I think would be the easiest.
You're on a fence, Mayor.
Six-foot privacy.
If you want to just put a third condition, six-foot privacy.
You would be willing to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's very nice.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve it, subject to the two conditions that are already stated, plus the third condition that Mr. Coleman has agreed to, that he will at his expense erect the reference six-foot fence for a buffer.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Bradley, and the actual motion made by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the conditional use, I'm sorry, there are a lot of folks from that James Huff area. If you would like to leave, you may. I will hold on for a minute. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Moving to the conditional use for 839 Overlook Trail, I'll open the floor to council members for discussion and/or vote. Move to approve. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
A second, but I'm going to give that one to Ms. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the preliminary plat at Hamrick Station, Mr. Calendar.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I'm out of sequence here. This is a preliminary plat that is a renewal. It's very similar to the other three you've seen this year already. This is a previously approved development. They have land disturbance permits that was, were approved. They're asking for the renewal of their preliminary plat so that expiration can continue. And it's essentially the exact same development that was approved. I believe it was back in June of 2021. There are no changes. There are no corrections required. The recommendation is approval as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Are there any questions, or can I entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the REBC grant program.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, we've applied for an REBC grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation. Basically, it's just a small grant that will give us some funding to enhance our right-of-way like we did up there on North Broad and Charlotte Road Boulevard, where we erected a sign, also did all that landscaping. So I think that last one was around thirty-four thousand dollars that we got to help defray some of those costs. And so we want to kind of replicate that around the city. We've talked about that for several years, and this is a good way to leverage some grant funding to do it. And we have the requisite resolution here before you on this.
Does anyone wish to have the resolution read? If no, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'm going to give, okay, we give Tyler the motion, and I think, right, Tyler? And the second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. I have three minutes, Larry. Our first reading of the Development Regulations Text Amendment Number Seven. Are there any questions regarding the ordinance? Does the council wish to have the ordinance read? Hearing none, we'll have a second reading at the November fourteenth council meeting. District Items, Lee Malcolm.
We have a Fall Fest downtown on Saturday. It's going to be a great event, and we encourage everyone to come out. And the town green looks amazing.
Maushie Crawford.
No, I don't have anything.
Charles Boyce the fourth.
No, sir.
Larry Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett. Tyler Gregory. Nathan Little.
No.
Nathan Little. David Dickinson.
You just insulted him.
I did.
You did.
Mayor, I'll update, two things. Maushie Crawford passed the, attended in Jekyll Island the Knox Leadership Summit last weekend, and apparently it was an invaluable experience. She said it's the best one.
It was. If you haven't taken it, I would encourage you. You won't come out the same way you went in. You won't.
I look forward to doing that, hopefully next year. Second, Lori Volk, when are you going to start building over there off the downtown Okay, third, Yo Dude is a men's mental health awareness group that has been started by Justin Bice. Very nice guy, very much needed for men who typically are not, you know, worry about their, their mental health.